The home meeting for Tuesday, May 24th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado? Rosado? You're muted.
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Thank you. Beck? Connolly?
Here.
Chanset? Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay? Uwer?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Thank you. I thought I heard you before. Um, Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger. We have eight out of 14.
Okay. We can conduct business, okay.
We have 10.
Yeah.
We have 10.
We get, yeah, we have 10. Good if I can read my own notes. Okay, um, now a reminder to speak directly into your microphone for the recording tonight.
Please. Um, I have Beck as absent, Connolly, Chanset, Baron, Malay.
Connolly and Baron are both here.
Okay, great, I did not hear them. There we go. Thank you so much, now I have 10.
Another reminder to speak directly into your microphones.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then we'll go to, uh, items to be removed, editor changed. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay. And Alderman, Beck has joined the meeting. So now we have 11 of 14. Okay, uh, item four is matters from the public, or anything not on the agenda. I see we have hand raised. Come on up and use the microphone, and if, just give us your name.
Good evening, my name is Roxanne Shulka, and my husband Wayne and I, we live at 300 Deerpath Road here in Batavia. I know it's a Tuesday evening, everyone wants to get on with your business and go home, so the issue we have should be a simple and easy fix. Here it is. In the fall of 2019, our property was annexed into the city. This was not something we requested or wanted. We bought our five acres in 2002 with over 100 trees, I counted, and Mill Creek running through it thinking we were in paradise. We were living the country life without having to be miles away from amenities. According to state laws, I understand, if you have less than 10 acres, you have no choice. So during the annexation process, we went back and forth numerous times and finally reached an agreement that we could live with. We asked for and received the okay to continue living according to Kane County regulations as if we were still unincorporated. Only our address and taxes changed, not our way of life. We also asked for and received the okay to continue with the property and not end when we sell. Because anyone who buys five acres is not interested in a city address or city water. We had to be able to sell our home, and the next buyer had to be able to sell, and so on. Well, that time has come, and now we've come into a problem. Wayne was out of town on business when the city council met September 24th, 2019, to discuss the annexation of our property. I addressed the council and explained in detail what I summarized to you just now. Apparently you can only make an agreement for 20 years. I was told, and this is why we agreed, that whoever owns 300 Deerpath Road at the end of 20 years could come back, ask for and receive a zoning variance so that the new owners could continue with their way of life. And I will read from page three of the city council notes. It says, "O'Brien asked how we could assure the variance is available after 20 years. Chairman Wolf suggested keeping a record of this meeting with the minutes and the video of this meeting available on YouTube." Okay. So we want to sell our house this summer, and we have an interested buyer. However, after reading the annexation agreement, item 10 also on page three, it says, "This agreement shall be binding upon the parties and their respective successors and assigns for 20 years, commencing as of the date hereof and for such," I wish they said it in English, "and for such further term as may be hereinafter be authorized by statute and city ordinance." Our buyer said, "That's not very clear, and he is not going to buy the property unless it's clearly stated that at the end of 20 years, whoever owns the property can come back and get a variance, um, so that they can continue to abide by Kane County regulations beyond the 20 years." I, last, this past week, I spoke with Scott Buning about this, and he said that he did not have the authority to write such a letter on behalf of the city council, which is why we're here tonight. Time is of the essence because the real estate market is slowing down, we have a buyer in hand. Like I said, this is an easy fix, simply put in writing what we have all agreed to. That's it.
Okay, I guess my question's gonna probably be for Scott. Do we have the ability to do that?
Well, as I, as I had spoken with Roxanne, that, um, you know, the agreement is for 20 years, and that's binding on the council. Um, and when we had the committee in a whole meeting, uh, in 2019, there was a lot of discussion about what would happen after that. And the committee basically, you know, a number of the committee members basically said that, you know, somebody could come back and request deviations from the code once the agreement expires, whether that's for agriculture uses, or burning, or what have you. Burning is not a zoning issue, that's, that's more of a municipal code issue. Um, but, you know, we couldn't really bind a future council to that, um, because it's not part of the annexation. But certainly if somebody comes back after 20 years and wants to make a request for that, you know, that's, that's certainly up to them.
My name is Wayne Shulka, Roxanne's husband, and I guess the thing that I, I think Scott just made our point. Um, he can't, or he feels that you guys can't write something, um, for 20 years from now. But we need to have that assurance that in 20 years, what you agreed to with us is going to be in place. It can't be, well, we don't know what a future city council is going to be. We agreed to the annexation, understanding that at the end of 20 years, whoever owned the home could come looking for the deviations, and they would get them. Um, so, again, I think Scott's kind of made our point. We need that now, and whoever buys the home from us would need that, and in perpetuity, basically.
I mean, I think the guarantee would be that you could come and apply for that.
Well, the, the understanding was that it would be given. We've got a unique property that, again, like Roxanne said, we had, we had no, no intention when we bought the home. We were looking for what we bought, um, not in the city, we wanted to be able to live a little bit of a country life. Um, you know, you, you bought some of our land to put a bike path in, we agreed to that. Um, you then chose to annex us, um, to seemingly, the idea we were told was to standardize addresses. Um, so ours went from 1 South 631 Deerpath to 300 Deerpath. Um, so we agreed to the annexation based upon what Roxanne did a good job of working with Scott to come, and the council at the time, to come to an agreement on.
I do, I do remember that, I mean, I was here, I remember that, so. Yeah. I mean, I, I guess, is there any way, Scott, that we can talk with our, um, legal team, whether or not that that's something that we can agree to? I mean, I know that the, the option or the opportunity is guaranteed, but I don't know that, because I have no idea what the world will be like in another, what, 17 years?
Yeah, I mean, we could talk to, we could talk to legal counsel about, you know, what it is. Um, my guess is it's, it's probably gonna be two parts. Um, you know, one is, is burning, um, you know, that's, that's a municipal code thing, that's not a variance to the zoning ordinance or anything like that. So that's, that's something different. Uh, the other issue is, is the agricultural uses. Um, you know, when the agreement expires, just so everybody understands, you know, anything that's being done on the property can continue as what we'll call legal non-conforming use. So that, that can continue until that, that use is, you know, terminated. So if they are, you know, let's say they had cattle on the property, and they had cattle there, they could continue to have cattle, but then once they stop having cattle, then they can, couldn't have cattle after the agreement expires. Um, so what we'd be looking at is, you know, whether or not we, um, you know, provide some other type of, you know, zoning relief in some sort, and I don't know what that would be, because, you know, it's, it's gonna be based on, um, you know, the county regulations that were in place before the property was annexed, I suppose, but, you know, that's, that's the best I can say. And, and if that's the case, you know, that's gonna require a variance process, which is gonna have to go through the plant commission and city council or public hearing and all that. So, that takes time.
And would the same thing be?
We also did not have legal counsel when we went through this, like I said, it should be an easy fix.
And, and we didn't choose to get an attorney because we didn't think that working with our city, we need, should have needed to. You were working with one of your residents, right, or who were going to be a resident, and we were working with a, a neighbor. Uh, so we didn't choose to get an attorney to represent us, we, we figured it wasn't necessary.
Scott, would the process be any different if we wanted to amend the, um, annexation agreement with that?
So what we'd be looking at is, you know, whether or not we, you know, provide some other type of, you know, zoning relief in some sort. And I don't know what that would be because, you know, it's gonna be based on, you know, the county regulations that were in place before the property was annexed, I suppose. But, you know, that's the best I can say. And if that's the case, you know, that's gonna require a variance process, which is gonna have to go through the plant commission and city council or public hearing and all that. So that takes time.
And would the same thing be-
We also did not have legal counsel when we went through this. Like I said, it should be an easy fix.
And we didn't choose to get an attorney because we didn't think that working with our city, we need, should have needed to. You were working with one of your residents, right? Or who were going to be a resident. We were working with a neighbor. So we didn't choose to get an attorney to represent us. We figured it wasn't necessary.
Scott, would the process be any different if we wanted to amend the annexation agreement with them and say, push the term of that annexation agreement out? 50 years or something?
Well, two things. One, any amendment to an agreement requires a public hearing. So we'd have to publish for a public hearing to amend that. So that also will take time. But by statute, we cannot extend an agreement past 20 years. So that is statutory limits.
That's what I think I remember we talked about during that actual meeting, that we couldn't go beyond 20 years at a time.
Correct. And I also offered to talk to their attorney, the buyer's attorney about it. When I talked to Roxanne about it, I offered to, you know, talk about it with their attorney and see if we could walk through it with them and see if we can, you know, come to some type of an understanding or resolution with it. But, you know, I can understand if they don't want us to do that.
Well, what can you tell them that you haven't told us?
Well, I guess I'd wanna see exactly what they're looking for. You know, if I can understand, you know, what is the concern of the buyer, you know, specifically? Is it burning? Is it agriculture? Is it, are they planning to have cattle? Is that something that we can somehow figure out how to address under the, either the existing codes or in the agreement in some fashion?
I don't know. And they're not gonna know when they go to sell, nor the next people. That's why this has to be in perpetuity.
Right. Well, and I guess, I guess the one issue, you know, and I think the city attorney would say this if you were here, that, you know, short of an annexation, there's never a guarantee of zoning. So, you know, the city council can take any residential or commercial property and zone it to a different zoning district. That's a fundamental, you know, tenet of zoning is that there is no guaranteed zoning. So I'm not saying that we would do that, but that's, that can't happen.
You made an agreement for 20 years. So what's magic about the 20 years? Why can't it be 200 years?
Because that's the state law. State law limits up to 20 years.
Right, but like Mr. Wolf suggested, could we go longer? Basically, and we can't.
Right, it's because of the state statute.
Yep, no, I understand that completely. But if you could go 50 or 100, it sounds like you would consider doing that. That's what all we're asking to be written into something that a buyer could be looking at and future owners can have in hand officially that they can continue coming back, requesting the variations, the deviations, whatever it is, and get them.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if we were going to write something like that into the agreement, you could do that, saying that, you know, they have the right to request it, not to guarantee it, but they have the right to request it. But the problem again is that, two things. One is that, you know, that's gonna take time because we have to go through a public hearing process to amend the agreement. And then on top of that is that the, you know, that's still their right after the agreement expires anyway. And they still could come back here and say, hey, city council, I'd like to have a zoning relief to allow X, Y, or Z. And that's up to the city council and the plant commission, if it's a zoning matter, to grant that or not grant that.
Which is why we're not gonna be able to sell our house. Who's gonna buy into a big unknown?
Well, I know it's not much comfort, but I mean, you know, we agreed as a city to enter to an annexation agreement that gave you certain guarantees for the 20 years that were allowed under statute. We weren't under any obligation to do that. You know, the property was surrounded. We could have just done an involuntary annexation, but we did want to negotiate in good faith with you to develop this annexation agreement to, you know, provide some relief and some coverage for you that, for issues that you had concerns with. So, you know, we did agree to do that.
And those issues aren't gonna go away in 20 years. It's still land law. It's still gonna be.
You were gonna make a point?
Nick, you had a comment?
Well, no, I was just concerned, I mean, one, I understand your frustration and I don't want you to think, I don't have an answer for you because I wanna go back. I would love to go back and see the minutes. If we promised X, I think I would support fulfilling that promise. But like, you come here and I don't know exactly what we promised. If there was a miscommunication that, A, you can come back and ask, or A, we guarantee it, that's two different things. And obviously you believe it was one thing. I'd like to go back. Obviously, time is of the essence. This is a problem, but I don't know if we have a solution right now. We need to go back and-
Scott can pull the meeting minutes and we could have it on next Tuesday's call meeting and we can talk about it next Tuesday.
Yeah, and there's a video also. You know, I can, I can share the video that I shared with Roxanne as well. There's, you know, we pulled that up and, you know, I shared with her what that was. And, you know, Alan, you did say, you know, that, you know, for the future, you know, that we would be able to have the minutes as well as the videotape of the meeting that would talk about, you know, that somebody could ask for that at some point in the future. So I mean, that was in that, in that video in the minutes.
Okay. I would like to see that. I mean, I have empathy for you and I wanna follow through with anything that we promised. I was here. So I don't remember offhand what I promised, but I don't wanna speak out of turn and I don't wanna make promises today without doing due diligence, unfortunately. Welcome to government. There's some time that works against you right now, but we can get it, I'll review it by next Tuesday and have a better discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, we would appreciate that.
We'll do that. We'll get it on the agenda for next Tuesday night and then we'll get all the information out to all 14 of us and then we'll be back. If you can be here next Tuesday night and we'll try and get some resolution for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
And one, one other thing that might be helpful, if you could get, like Scott was saying, what specific concerns does your buyer have? That would be extremely beneficial for us to be able to see how those concerns can be addressed. I mean, when it's this amorphous situation, we, it's kind of hard to even know what the issue really is, what they'd be asking for, what they think needs to be guaranteed. So, but I mean, there has to be something in their mind. If they've told you, we're not gonna buy unless we're guaranteed, what do they want guaranteed?
Well, I think one of his, their concerns is going to be when they go to sell it, right? Another buyer is gonna have whatever their list of concerns are. So they're wanting to have just the fact that they can come back and get the deviations agreed to. We don't know what they're gonna be-
And I think that that would always be guaranteed, that you can come in and ask for whatever change you want to your property. I just don't know that I, we can say that we can guarantee that you're gonna get everything you wanted or get exactly what you wanted.
I think the idea would be that they get what they are, what we, they were before we were annexed and what they are now.
Right.
Right? We agreed to what the conditions were to get annexed, right? We're not going back on that either, right? So all we're looking for is for that to be continued and continued for the future homeowners. Otherwise, I mean, we don't want the property to go vacant. If you guys wanna buy our property, you're happy. You already bought some of it, right, to put a bike path in. If you wanna buy more, you're welcome to. You're welcome to do that.
We're trying to sell property, not buy more.
We're looking to sell ours. And we've already lost a couple of weeks now, a week and a half.
Okay. Well, we'll do everything we can to get all that information out to everybody and try to get some resolution for you next Tuesday.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. We'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Scott, if you can send that stuff out to us and then, you know, we'll get that on the agenda for next Tuesday night and maybe send off a memo to Drendel Jansen.
Thank you.
And find out what their take would be on possibilities for what we could do. And then also if you can get us the information of what exactly the seller's concerns are with what's in the agreement that they don't like or that they don't understand.
I think it's the vag-
Yeah, use the mic. Sorry.
I think it's the vagueness of what is going to happen at what time, right? So what can somebody do at the end of the 20 years and what are they going to be granted is what they're looking for. Again, just as you don't know what a city council's gonna look like then and what zonings and what have you is going to be, we need to understand what a buyer is going to be faced with 20 years from now, right? Because if we stayed 20 years, it's, everything is good for that length of time. If we, at 20 years, whoever owns the house now is gonna be faced with looking to sell it or looking to continue living there. And they're gonna need to be able to understand what the conditions are, right?
Okay.
In that regard, rather than going like the telephone game where things can get misinterpreted between people, I mean, Scott's offer to speak with the buyer may be very beneficial to answer these buyers' questions and concerns.
It's possible. We'll bring that up to them, but again, I think it's, in our mind-
If they really have these questions and concerns, then maybe speaking directly to the quote unquote horse's mouth about what those concerns are would then assist the whole process of what we're-
That's possible. We'll talk to them to see if they wanna do that. The whole thing is, we feel we should be able to get it right because it could be that they will, for whatever reason, not end up buying the home and we're gonna still have to be faced with that with another buyer, right?
I'm just saying the vagaries of the whole situation as to what exactly this buyer's concerns are, because that's what your concern is right now, is to address this buyer's concerns. Because once this buyer's bought your place, you don't have these concerns anymore. So the goal would be to address this particular buyer's concerns, not somebody who owns the property 100 years from now. It might be the same buyer, who knows? But that's why I think it might be very beneficial for the whole process to have, to allow, have them reach out to Scott, who I'm sure will be very helpful and very, very willing to answer any questions and concerns they have.
Could be. So what, again, I guess I'm gonna go back to is what this buyer's interests or concerns are, are perhaps gonna be different than who owns the house 20 years from now, right? And who owns the house then 20 years after that, when you're able to write them, write the variances in 20-year chunks? So it seems as though that almost, almost doesn't matter. But I understand your point, Chris. I do. I truly do.
Right. We need to be, we wanna be concerned to get you to where you wanna be and get this buyer where this buyer wants to be. And then it can all be addressed by subsequent people when these hypothetical situations come up when we're dealing with the present.
That's possible. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk to them and see how they'd wanna participate in what we're trying to get done. It seems like we should be able to get this done the way we're going about it, though. And we'll talk to you next Tuesday to see what, again, I do appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item five, which is a presentation on the progress on the water treatment plant.
Hello? All right. My name is Emily. I've been doing construction observation out at the water treatment plants and this is the update from the past month. So a review of the project scope. This is the existing water treatment plant number two with the proposed additions. We've got the new brine building addition, the concrete driveway out front, and then relocating that access road along the backside. And the progress from the last month. Water treatment plant number two expansion, this is from inside the new brine building. The new brine system startup is ongoing. The grating around the two new recessed brine tanks has been installed. That's the yellow in the pictures. The salt pallets are now being loaded inside the new brine building in that extra storage space. Electrical installation is still ongoing and the finished trim installation is still Well 11 rehab, it's back in service and then that transducer installation is ongoing. Well number 10 rehab, the equipment inspection was completed and that rehab work is also High service pump rehab, continued rehab with estimated reinstallation and testing in June of 2022. Dualator two rehab, the filter area rehab work is still ongoing. The welding work for the underdrain and the trough repairs has been completed. The coating touch-up of that filter area has been completed and the underdrain piping installation is ongoing. The detention tank rehab work has been completed and the aerator rehab work is ongoing. So those nozzles are going to be installed inside the aerators and then new trays are gonna be installed. Continuing on with the dualator rehab, the piping work and filter media is gonna be installed in the filter areas after those cells are completely repaired. New valves piping and control panel installation is still ongoing. The exterior valve coating is ongoing. And then the estimated completion date for dualator number two is June of 2022. Some miscellaneous site improvements. They're preparing the site for the new road pavement along the back of the new brine building addition. The silt fence around the perimeter of the site has been removed. The regrading of some of the areas where they were excavating or doing work is in progress. And then seeding and blanketing is in progress all around the site. Next steps, ongoing brine building modifications, completing the rehab for dualator number two, continuing the high service pump two and five rehab, continuing well number 10 rehab, and then putting that brine system fully online. This is the anticipated construction schedule. And any questions?
If you have any questions? So I see we got the other well apart. That one isn't, it was 11 was the one that had all the sand problems?
Yeah, that was well 11. And yeah, the, the transducer's the last thing to go in there and they are working on that.
And then 10, would that have any damage or any visible problems when they got it apart?
No.
And that one was okay?
That one was good. They're just doing the rehabilitation of the equipment currently. They have a backlog built up at their shop right now, but we expect in the next month they will complete their rehab and have the well equipment back to the site and ready for reinstallation. We're targeting end of June, early July for the reinstallation and startup of that pump.
Okay. Cause I know that some, I think it was on 11, we're waiting for parts on some of it, so.
Yeah, the pumping assembly for well 10, we were able to work out something. We were able to get it more quickly this time.
Maybe make it here?
That's actually correct.
Excellent. That's what we wanna hear. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody online have any questions? Okay. Look forward to seeing you guys probably twice more and then we'll go out and have a, an inspection out there and go out there and see how everything looks at the, at the site.
Yeah, we're, we will. That will be something that will be scheduled near the end of the project, having open house out there. And then instead of pictures, you can see it in person and walk around and ask more questions at that time. It'll make more sense.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then next is item six, resolution 2258R, authorizing professional services agreement with House Hill Levine for the creation of the new downtown plan.
Good evening. This is Shannon. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, you're a little bit loud.
Okay. I'll move back a little. Is that any better?
That's better.
Okay, thank you. So when I was last speaking with you on April 26th, council gave approval for staff to go ahead and negotiate the final details of the agreement with House Hill Levine for planning consulting services for the downtown plan. And this evening in your packets, you have a copy of the draft resolution for the agreement. The numbers are consistent with what we talked about last time. We did go ahead and add in the two optional features that there was consensus to move forward with. So when we started in the budget process last year, $120,000 was approved and part of this fiscal year's budget. And then we are going to add on the optional downtown design guidelines for $15,000 and the downtown story map feature for $7,000. So the proposed contract was revised and is now in combination, a total of $150,000, $150,980, excuse me. The additional, about $31,000 over the 2022 budgeted amount will need to come from TIP increment or general funds or potentially the project may kinda go between the end of this year and early next- next year, so that we could spread the budgeting out between the two years. Or, you know, a final option might be that we need to do a budget amendment if everything ended up getting done much sooner than we expect. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We, I believe, had intended to have House Hill Levine on the line. I don't see them in the queue here, but Scott and I can answer any questions council may have. Otherwise, the form of the scope of services has remained consistent with our discussion on April 26, and we'd love to be able to move forward with the project.
Nick is an attendee. I see him on the...
Oh, you do? Okay, thank you.
Is it Nick Davis? Nick Davis, Scott?
Yeah, Nick Davis is one with House Hill Levine.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? What we talked about earlier, I guess my big question is, where do we want to pull the money from? Do we want to just take it out of the TIF district? Or districts from downtown? I don't know how we would split that up, since it does cover more than just one TIF district.
Yeah, we would probably pull it from TIF one. That's where the lion's share of our revenue is being generated right now, so that would be the most likely location. And as you know, we can port that money across the adjoining TIF districts, so it can be used for anything within all three.
Based on our discussion the other night, out of that money...
That's where I think it needs to come from. And I think, you know, we've talked about this again enough, where I think we want to have a plan that we can implement and implement quicker than the plans we've had in the past, or that, I guess to me, seems more realistic that we can implement that. So, I really want to get this and all of the options that are available with it, so we can try to make this work and work on a consistent, regular basis, so we get some of this stuff done. I know in the past, the time that I've been on the council, there have been times when we've had plans or have designs of different things that we haven't gotten through. And I think, you know, we need to hold ourselves, our feet to the fire, and make sure that this stuff happens when we start designing this, and not say, you know, "We're just going to have to wait until something else happens before we do some of this," but really push to try to get some of this done, especially downtown in some of the spots where you feel like there's giant disconnects between blocks and different areas of downtown, where I think that that, to me, would help development immensely if we didn't have those gaps in different spots. Abby, go ahead.
A couple months ago, we were talking about some of the underdeveloped spots in town that aren't in downtown. I think Keenan and I had both brought up, and Mark had brought up Form-Based Code. And Scott, you had said that there's going to be a plan that's coming, and we can talk about it then. Is that, is that this plan? And is there a way to work in that discussion, but then also have it, this physical scope of it be wider than just downtown?
Yeah. They, we did talk about that with the consultant, that that is going to be something that they will look at as part of this plan and make recommendations on.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? So, I haven't seen anybody say no to using TIF funds for that, so I think that that would be our source of revenue to make up the shortfall in what we had budgeted over what's proposed. I think that's where that would come from. And then, if nobody else has any comments, I'll make this short and sweet. I'll recommend to council Resolution 2258R, authorizing professional service agreement with House Hill Levine for the creation of a new downtown plan.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Baron. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet absent. Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Leazzy?
Aye.
Lele absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
And Vogelsinger absent.
Aye.
She's here. I'm sorry. I forgot to let you know, Jen. She's, she got here at 7:22.
Thank you. Motion carried 12 to zero.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Up next is item seven, project status. Anthony, that's yours tonight.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So, from Public Works, we have our engineering has secured a contractor to remove the pavement striping at the McKee and Batavia Avenue pedestrian crosswalk. IDOT requires that hard copies of the permit documents be physically mailed to them for final approval. Once we receive final approval from IDOT, we will direct our contractor to proceed. Signage and sidewalks will be removed with our in-house staff. Staff has also requested assistance from a design firm to begin work on a newspaper boy alley arch. Grading work on the west side of Kirk Road for the Mahoney Creek Trippity Terry Project is substantially complete. Landscape work has begun. City entrance sign project is out to bid with bid opening scheduled for June 14 from our Community and Economic Development Department. The Cow Meeting on May 31, again, a Cow Meeting on May 31, will have the approvals for the proposed belt tire facility, as well as the approval for the amendment to SSA 58, which is Tanglewood Hills. Economic Development conducted their second SWOT SWAT analysis meeting with members of Main Street. This is the next step in the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Our seasonal person, Shay Burnham, started work last week. She is doing part-time hours to assist the clerical staff. She will be here through mid-August. Permits were submitted for the Mocha Coffee Restaurant on Independence Drive. Site work has started on a Winding Creek development, including tree removal and silt fence installation. Those are your updates for project status.
Excuse me. Anthony, can you read that first item on IDOT again?
I can read that for you, Nick. Engineering has secured a contractor to remove the pavement striping at the McKee Batavia Avenue pedestrian crosswalk. IDOT requires that hard copies of the permit documents be physically mailed to them for final approval. Once we receive final approval from IDOT, we will direct our contractor to proceed. Signage and sidewalks will be removed with our in-house staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does IDOT not have computers?
In triplicate. They have to be mailed to them.
Mark, I think we could find a few people from the Miata Club. We can go out and just meet an extra tire, and we could get rid of those marks real fast. Take care of them on my way home.
And again, just a reminder for anybody that's listening online and just our public, we are still having our Cow Meeting for May 31. So, we are still on for the May 31 Cow Meeting. Thank you.
And we've had the agenda.
I kind of made sure of that with the agenda item we added 15 minutes ago.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Does anyone have any others this evening?
I have a question.
Yes.
And maybe for Anthony. The economic development sessions that have been going on, there's one that's open to the general public, correct? Is that one scheduled yet?
That's a question for, a question for Shannon.
Okay, so, the three sessions that are related to the SWAT planning are basically the Chamber of Commerce, the Main Street Board, each of those boards, and then there's a group of, a cross-section of some of our taxing body representatives, some residents just kind of at large, a few business owners that aren't included in one of the other two board groups. So, they were a list of folks that Laura and I had brainstormed on and will be scheduling their meeting for June. What we have been talking about doing, this is a little bit different than the downtown plan or a comprehensive plan rewrite, you know, in that we're hoping to get the overarching umbrella of feedback on the larger SWAT issues, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, so that we can find consensus on what the items that everyone views as top priority are. And then, once we have that information, we're going to come back to you, to council, to summarize all of the findings and make sure that what we're seeing as the key issues across all three of those focus groups align with council and your feedback. And then, you know, once we have that kind of settled, staff's going to go back and look at what sorts of programming and other options might be necessary to address those top priorities. So, this is going to be kind of an evolving process and a back-and-forth kind of dialogue as we work through these details. But we do acknowledge, you know, we've had a few folks from the public reach out after seeing some of the recent press on the project. And so, we've got a couple of folks on our backup list, if anybody from the third group that I mentioned cannot, cannot participate. But we, in order to give folks an opportunity to chime in, we're thinking about doing a online survey, and we've been working with Lori Boderman. I'm putting together a project page for the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city's website, too, where all the updates and that survey, when it becomes available, would be pushed out, along with the normal channels like the e-newsletter.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any others? If not, then I'll need a motion to go into executive session for probable litigation. So, moved?
Second.
Motion by Ewer, second by Serone.
Sure.
Is that right? What? Connolly. Yeah, maybe I should look instead of just listen. Yeah. Okay. Roll call, please.
Ewer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Sofa? Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Leazzy?
Aye.
Emily absent. Motion carried 12 to zero.
Okay. And I do not expect anything to come out of this after the executive session. George and Mike?